Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, November 3rd, Election Day. Six o'clock and we're gonna have a work session. Stand, do the pledge of allegiance to the
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which always stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, and living in this
I have a lone asylum to honor the military, firefighters, sheriff's deputies, and road workers as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Steve, let me see your roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Michael McWolffman?
Present.
Roy Mann?
Present.
Jim McGuire?
Is that a group name? Okay, so, first thing is old business on the list. If there's nothing on the list, if I have anything to able to discuss under old business? Good things underway for the, maybe are on the list for the meeting?
If we wanna talk about the meeting, definitely, I know there's something.
Well, we discuss it now, a lot of times it makes a meeting easier, what you guys think? I mean, I think so, don't you, Steve? If we kinda get it out of the way now? Yes, Roy? Something still to talk about?
We'll have the discussion.
All right, I'll talk about the virtual meeting on Zoom. With the virus getting away it is. I think that's something we may wanna consider now.
I agree with you 100%. We can make the decision in the meeting, in the work session, but I could just the ability to stay home if we want. I don't know, Steve, were somebody going to ask other areas, what they do for assigning things?
They come in and sign the next day or whatever independently, so you avoid the conflict of having a meeting at the same time trying to sign documents after the meeting. But according to our legal counsel, Mr. Peterson, he said that you either have to decide this, be out of the building or in the building, but you can't be voted.
Explain that, I'm a little cloudy on that, Steve.
Well, and again, I was just taking what was explained to me. If you choose to go Zoom, all elected parties must be in Zoom. It can't be some in the building, some not. You can't conduct business half and half, because that's breaking the sunshine law. If you vote legislatively to go out, then you all are working from the same so-called "out," whether it's at your house or wherever you decided to chime in on your meeting. You can't hold votes, in other words, you can't have some people sitting in a room doing a TV set and you can't vote on anything in this meeting, because you have to be physically in the same room or legislatively under the same meeting requirements. So like Harrison Township, they are out. They all are remote and they're running their meeting from outside their building. Butler Township, they're in, but they're not out and in. You can't do that. So that's all that was explained to me at this point. Most of your cities are all out. City Clayton is out. City Dinglewood is out. They conduct everything from remote, and then there's no breaking of the sunshine law, because you're not in the same room together. You're not, you know, that kind of thing.
But you can make a decision under Zoom. So if we're all at our home and we're on Zoom, we can still make the decision.
Sure.
And just come in the next day and sign the actual paper.
Exactly, because you verbally voted to accept Resolution 1641 or whatever it is. Or if it's a new resolution, you know, that you don't have drafted up, you say, like you've done before, even in here, we pass Resolution, you know, to be determined or sometimes you don't need a resolution, sometimes it's just a matter of a yes or no vote. Any of that is documented well, so your minutes are taken whether you're out of office or in, but you can't be in vote.
So we could not do the Zoom thing and be here?
Now, you can televise any of your meetings, no matter where you are, that's a whole different story, but when you're conducting your meeting, it must be all or none.
You aware of that, Roy? I was not.
Omens last statement, I've heard something about him.
And the only reason why, I guess, is that the legislature is allowing this because of COVID. They don't want two elected officials to conspire in a room, and then there's data problems with the third one, for instance, something happens, their internet shuts down or something, and you've precluded the third person to be in the meeting. So it's either all out, and then you have failure for all of you, and the meeting stops, or you're all in.
Okay, so if we did Zoom and we're all out?
Right.
Would this room still be open with a TV screen for residents?
No. The reason why you go out, the reason why the legislature is allowing you to out, according to OTA, their website is, is that you're not, you're trying to not have your residents be exposed to COVID. And most places meet in their fire stations, they're right out in their bays or whatever, and you don't want to bring any possible infection in to your people that are trying to take care of the people that are sick. So the whole reason why they've done this, since a lot of them have done it since March or April, all summer and here now fall, is they don't want to expose their building nor the people that work in it, that live in it, to the virus, so they all went out.
What do you do about places that have limited internet access, people like Westside Township?
I know your exact thing, so I want to explain that too. This isn't something I think is good or bad, I'm just saying that this is what the communities have done. It's, the state of Ohio says, the ORC says, you only have to give the residents the ability to view the meeting. And they drew a line there and said it's up to the residents, either if it's a physical meeting, they come here, like the people that are here tonight, or they find a way to get on the internet and watch it. It is not the legislative ability of any elected body to have to go out and fix communication devices for anyone on the outside, because you run a risk there too, that you conduct a meeting and what happens if your failure of equipment. But you're conducting your meeting because you didn't fail. Then a resident could say, well, you blocked me, and you created a problem there for yourself. So it's the responsibility of the public to view the meetings in any fashion that the meetings are being held, because they are your meetings. They're not township residents' meetings, they are township trustee meetings, and you're to conduct business. But you gotta have, you should give them a portal to be able to watch, view, you know, and then if you choose to allow the three-minute speech, they can do that as well through Zoom, so everybody gets their opportunity from wherever they are to ask questions. So that's, you know, I viewed, since this whole virus thing started, I've been viewing other cities, villages, and township meetings and seeing how they're conducting it. They're all pretty much conducted the same way. So, you know, so it's a decision of the trustees, do you wanna prevent the virus from being spread potentially throughout the facilities, and worry about cleaning, as you brought up in the last meeting, or do you go out, you know, where it's table, you know, you take the meetings, you can always replay it, we talked about doing that on the website for the public, you know, if you wanna try to go live, you could try to go live. That's not really the question. Question is, do you wanna be in or do you, you know, do you wanna be out to protect the people that live here? And that's the question you have to ask.
So you could legally perjure the idea of limited internet access in some parts of your community, and the people wanna see it, if you set it up where, so they can come here and see it, wouldn't it help? You have a monitor here and somebody wants to come, they can see it, they can't say anything, they can't communicate, but they can view it? If they don't have internet access?
I don't know how to answer that question to you, except the fact that the legislature said that it's the responsibility of the homeowner or the resident to be able to gain access, and that's not the responsibility of the elected officials. You just choose the venue of what you want to have your meetings at. Whether you want it at a church, you wanna hear, you know, where do you want their meetings at, and then that's what you vote on, and then it's up to the public to make their effort however to be able to get there. Or, you know, whatever the case may be. The biggest thing is, the different people I've interviewed and it's not, none of them are experts. They all continue to wonder how long or, you know, what we do, but the issue is, they're able to keep the public from getting sick and keep their buildings from becoming unhealthy. And that's the biggest reason why they chose to do it.
You think about that, Roy? The possibility, I mean, I might turn off to it.
Okay, let's, if we do this, and they're in, then we need to have Buckeye to take care of it and everything. Set up more. And while we're on the same issue as far as meetings, then I'd say we go down to the first of the month meeting and work session. And we'll do this once a month, because...
I think we have more time than we thought of meeting a month.
The way things are going, I'm looking for the governor to go do something with you.
Look at what?
I said, I'm looking at the governor, he's gonna have to do something else. The hospitals are, a lot of them are running out of room. And we're gonna be, some hospitals now are deciding or saying who gets treated a certain way.
Well, if you lean, go to the Zoom function of doing it, why can't you still have two meetings? Because then you're not doing the, you say you don't wanna, you won't go down to one meeting a month. I think we have more time getting everything done that needs to be done in this township, what that, control, everything needs to be done with this one meeting a month. If we did the Zoom thing, then you stop, because you're staying at home, you stopped the virus contamination, and we can still save two meetings a month. I think it's a hard time getting everything done with this one meeting a month. Staying transparent, getting all the money taken care of. We stay here, then maybe that'd be a reason to go down to one meeting a month, but we do the Zoom thing, although we could do two. This is my personal opinion, right off the bat, so we'll talk about it though. What about the list of CARES Act funding? We discussed that, that old business, we were discussing the stuff that's on there before the meeting? Is that public, is that listed, published in this?
Handout. Yes, it is. There's a resolution for tonight that Tracy prepared for you trustees to accept the funding.
Yeah.
Generically, because you said, last meeting, you said bring it forward, so we wrote it together.
Yes.
We attached to it a preliminary list of items. They do not add up to the amount of money that the township's been giving through CARES Act. I was at a webinar today, and this is interesting, if you don't accept all the money upfront and turn back what you don't spend, if any new funding comes along, because there's a lot of communities that are gonna turn money back, we're not eligible for any more funding. But by following that, adopting that resolution, again, drafted by the fiscal officer and myself, then you open yourself up to the possibility of gaining more money activist than before. So this community needs every dollar it can to get, you know, get the community turned up, you know, ready for any worse COVID-19. So that's the resolution that is there. And the chart, like you said, Mike, after it, is just the preliminary work that has been done so far, that we will have to have your vote between now and December 20th to be able to actually say, go spend it. Some of it's been spent somehow. I have an additional item I wanna share with you, since this is the work session. This is a resolution that other communities in Montgomery County, we personalized it for Jefferson, in case you're interested in doing so. I don't know if you saw the Daily Newspaper article earlier this week, but City Kettering, for example, was spending almost $1.6 million to reimburse their salary accounts for the fire and rescue police and road working staff during the COVID time. And there's a period between dates that you're permitted to reimburse the township for salaries, extra overtime, or anything like that that occurred during our pandemic that's occurring. Some communities are paying 100%, some are doing a percentage. So in order for you to consider any new money down the road that might come to you, or some of the existing money that you have today that we're trying to spend on that chart, you have to pass this resolution if you want to use some of that money to replenish the salary accounts for those departments. Without this resolution passed, you're not allowed to give any money toward reimbursement toward the salary accounts. County prosecuting attorneys distributing, has distributed this to the townships and is recommending that if you have a fire department or a road department, or if you happen to have a police department, you should pass this, just put yourself in the position that you might be able to take some of the money and put back toward your salary accounts for all summer long that your people struggled with COVID. But it's an option. You do not have to pass it, it is not something that's out of the blue, but it's being done by all the communities, most of the communities around Montgomery County, in case you have some leftover money that you could put back into the fire and police or road department salary accounts. With us as township, we all know that money is very tight, and any money that goes back into the fund helps that department run stronger and, you know, be more solvent. So if you're interested in passing that, you're in the regular meeting, then you need to move forward on that, but you don't have to. But I'm just saying that this is what is being done by many communities in the Dayton area or Montgomery County, and I wanted to personalize and bring it to you tonight as an option. Again, it's not obligating you to do it, it's just strictly the option that if we get through this chart, Trustee Mann and Trustee McWolffman, and we have leftover money, or we're given money later because of the other communities turning it back, you have a good opportunity to replenish some of your salary accounts for the workers that worked between, it's like April, there's a date in April till December 20th. So, you know, there's always that rumor out there with the election today, that if one party gets in, they're gonna extend this comp, this money, but we still have that hard date we have to stay with right now, which is December 20th. So, that's the only additional item trustees that I have. Tracy is working the polls, so she couldn't be here tonight, but she wanted to make sure we delivered on what you asked, which is that resolution that's in your packet for accepting the money as a whole. And then we'll detail it out as we go.
So it says that we determined the following Harrison Township's public safety positions were substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency.
Right.
What did we do to mitigate?
Anyone that were, they're still drafting legislation about what that term means, but what's been explained to us as administrators in the county is, anyone that had to wear COVID clothing on any call, any run throughout that period, is what they call COVID action, Mr. McWolffman. So it's not the whole salary account for everybody, because you're normally gonna have fire and rescue on duty, but if you, like, we'll probably have to go back and pull the records of how many COVID patients we took to the hospital, and then we can take those salaries for the period, so it's not a huge amount, but it's a portion of it. Because every responder, just like your road department, they're cleaning up people's trash, dumpings, tearing up, they're cleaning up the homes, all that stuff is known to have COVID in it. So your road people are exposed to it or have been since COVID was announced. So you, you know, how do you determine that? How do you determine how many hours the road department did toward cleanups? Well, that's gonna have to be a number cruncher. But, you know, when I saw that Kettering was using out of their $2.5 to $3 million, using $1.6 million just to replenish their police and fire and road departments, and then the county prosecutor said this is preventable, I think you should at least consider passing it, and then if you don't use it for that, you don't use it for that. But we don't know, as Mr. Mann said, we don't know about the future, what's gonna happen in January or after December 20th. Will this get worse? If you had not passed this before the December 20th date, there's a situation where they're saying that you may not be eligible to receive that money and put it back into your salary accounts. So it's more about open the door, hope for the best, but no guarantee or no requirement that you have to use this resolution. But if you don't have it, you can't.
Gotcha. Before we get there, does anybody know what the first number is supposed to be tonight? Tracy, did Tracy tell us what the first resolution number is supposed to be?
No, she did not do that with us, so I can look at, I don't know, if you guys wrote down last meeting, play a chance.
I didn't bring that paperwork with me. Just the order.
I can see if I have any paperwork.
Are we allowed to ask questions about what you're discussing there?
I'll text and see if they're doing it.
So last one on here is 88, and it was the trash service agreement. Budget planning session before that was 87. 86 was kind at least, does that sound like the last one? The last one on the, what's posted online is 88.
But that's what, that's what we'll go with, we'll go Yeah, that's what I showed on the website as well.
I'm gonna, intended with this voting, put out here, Steve is below the list here, correct? Add it to the list?
Yes, add it to the list. As it was, just because we had a late webinar today with the county prosecutor, and I did get it onto the agenda On that list, as you guys go through it, I do wanna tell you that we've also ruled out a lot of the things, so you'll find that at the bottom of the list.
Oh, back to the CARES list?
Yeah, the CARES list, kind of a spreadsheet that's in your pack, you gotta copy and you pack it too. It's, we ruled out or went through and, you know, thought which is, you know, had more valid use than others.
Or the notes on the far right inside?
Yes. And if you notice, like on page two or three, unless yours is, you show three pages, or are you looking at the one that I gave you last, two weeks ago?
I'm looking, it was scanned by Adrian today.
Okay.
Adrian provided.
So it's two or three pages, where the last several says not qualified for funding, and you'll see a list of those as well. So like we told you two weeks ago, we would rule out, you know, once we got more information, what does or what doesn't apply.
Yes, he does that, okay, yeah.
We also sat down and consciously started doing a spreadsheet about how much money it was, and realistically said, trying to rank items that are more important than others, because we don't have enough money to do everything that was on that list. You know, and then that's before the salary thing came up as well. So I just wanna explain what that spreadsheet looks like. Tracy did a really good job working with us to put that together. It's not what you're voting on tonight, you're not voting on those specific expenditures.
Right.
But it gives you guys a ballpark of where we're at. Probably the biggest item that's gonna have some differential on it is the key, the card key slice, where you slide the card or the keys to get into the building, no overlap, your hands touching the keypad and things. There's one bid that's on there for $120,000. We have the same exact qualifications that came in at $89,000 with the carrier, but we've not completely scrubbed both of them to see what's different on each of them. So I think that might be one of your bigger differentials. The others are pretty close to spot on where we're at.
But some of the stuff like already in progress is part of the budget, would mean, is that, does that mean, do you say that's questionable then? Does it sound like?
Right, if they, so the CARES Act says if something was already budgeted, and a lot of the fire expenditure expenditures were already budgeted by the fire chief, those cannot take CARES Act.
So what's it mean when it says justification spelled out? Do you have those piece papers, has something on it?
We're putting that together now.
Okay.
There is some...
Don't have it work.
What's really hard about this, yeah, it's a lot of work by all of us, what's really hard about this is it's a moving target. No one can give you the right answer. We've got the OTA telling us, right? You have the prosecutors telling us, you have the county commissioners that set up the CARES Act office that distributed the money telling us, and nobody tells you exactly the same answer. Their answer is, go back to legal counsel. So we are constantly going back to legal counsel and asking questions, is this valid, is this not? Because you don't want the federal government coming back and auditing you and then realizing that you weren't allowed to spend the money on AP or C. Again, I throw the politic thing in it, you just don't know. One group says you can spend it for anything, including dumping it into your general fund, and don't spend any of it.
You think Nathaniel would help us?
He's who we're talking to almost every...
Okay, good.
We've got him, I talked to him three times today, and I just wish there was that smoking gun that we could just go to and say, this is the rule. But it's not, so we have to be very careful. So any expenditures we come back to you with will be bona fide requests. But all of it has to start, if it's construction or clean, has to start before December 20th. So we've got to get rolling a lot of this. Now, the nice thing is, any expenditure done earlier since April, so the fire departments bought masks and, you know, all those stuff, that's reimbursable.
Yes.
Those are expenditures that have been done and we can reimburse, that's, those are the so-called no brainers.
Yep.
So, that's all I have on the virus, or the CARES Act.
As we know, Tracy's running the polls tonight, she did send, if I saw, just a comment, so the next meeting, we have a work session at every meeting, in the next work session, she's wanting to make the work session an audit committee meeting. We tried to do that a meeting or two ago, and nobody showed up for the work session, and we couldn't do it. So the next meeting, the 20th of October, we will make that an audit committee meeting, I presume it should be Zoom, should be all of the people, and main topic will be centered on the audit and improvements in our next audit, so. For tonight, in this work session, she wanted us to discuss the tax budget. Didn't we pass that last meeting, Steve?
She brought it forward, you guys passed it in some way.
Yeah.
But maybe this is something else. She didn't send an email to me, so I can find out what, you know, to prepare for, so.
Yeah, you tagged it.
What time?
Sent, oh, that's... Sent, oh, that's a little bit.
Yeah, I think that was for the last meeting.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. It is.
Now, Mike, you said October, the 20th. You meant November?
Nah, I was wrong. I was with a baggy mail. Scratch that. So we got any old business we were looking to? I mean, list of stuff there, Steve, declaring the property for the demolition. Give them a list of stuff. Came up with a good list there.
And I want to tell you the good news. You know, the last time I talked to you, it was $75,000.
Yeah.
For the 2.0, and then we used some of our 175 that we've got at CDVG to match it to the 150. Well, other communities did not use their money. So they gave us another amount of money. So our total that they're giving us is $112,000. And then our match will come from our 175. So we're gonna have $224,000 to put toward teardown of properties.
Good, okay.
It only applies to certain, what they call, income areas, all determined by the federal government. So it doesn't apply to all areas of the township. Homes or buildings can only be in these different so-called, you gotta look at a map to see where they declared the colors and all that.
See the list of 27 addresses you have, or have those already been deciphered and they're in that group?
Exactly.
Okay.
And they've been inspected. They've been, those were, a lot of those were the properties that you trustees had already set on a previous list just for CDVG to tear down.
Okay.
But now we got the opportunity to get 50% more cash. We took up on it. Besides the city of Dayton, we are the largest community, or the largest amount of money that's been given for small communities in Montgomery County. We were the largest amount of money to receive, so we're very lucky. When we're done with this thing, CDVG may still have about, I guess about $60,000 or $70,000 left over for us to try to go for another grant and try to do some match. So tonight, all I have is a resolution that declare those properties. You already have done each one individually, but just to do a master declaration that their nuisances, and then the land bank 2.0 program and the county treasurer's office will take it from there. It includes two of the biggest properties that are troublesome on Third Street, including the Old American Legion, next to the hot dog stand, and the property on Down that's got windows knocked out of the front of it. It's about halfway to Victoria's on the other side of the street. Those are the two big structures. The others are all made of wood, structured and whole.
So talking about resolutions, the resolution, I guess that's gonna be, my idea looks like, requesting separate accounts and charges for different.